Baltimore City Budget and Appropriations Committee. We're going to get started. We are here for Baltimore, or the Bureau of Budget and Management Research, BBMR. I'm joined to my left by Vice Chair of the Committee, Councilman Leon Pinkett from the 7th District. To his left, Councilman Isaac Yitzhak Schleifer from the 5th District, member of the committee. Councilwoman Shan Snead, 13th District, member of the committee. To my right, Vice President of the Council Sharon Green Middleton, 6th District, member of the committee. To her right, Councilman Robert Stokes, 12th District. And to his right, Councilman Bill Henry, 4th District, member of the committee. And City Council President Bernard C. Jack Young. Before we get started, Bob, I need to run in about five minutes to a meeting with the administration on the budget negotiations. I just want to make an overarching comment. The budget process last year was extremely rough. I'm thankful for the partnership with the mayor and the administration. We were able to get a deal done. It has been, I've been very optimistic working with you and BBMR. We're not done yet, that's right. But it's been a pleasure to work with you and Caroline. And, you know, I'm looking forward to continuing that partnership. And I really do appreciate the responsiveness and what I believe is a great level of respect that you've demonstrated toward the council and to the committee in taking our requests seriously and viewing them as being responsible requests. So I really do appreciate it. And I hope that we can continue this working relationship in this manner moving forward. So thank you guys for that. Now with that, I'm going to turn it over to Vice Chair Pinkett.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So, Bob, if you want to proceed?
Sure. We'll go ahead. Good evening. My name is Bob Sennemy, Budget Director. I'm the director of what we call the Bureau of Budget Management Research, which is a division within the Department of Finance. It's a small shop, but we, a primary role, of course, is developing and overseeing the city's $2.8 billion operating budget. And so first, before I go into a little bit more detail in our presentation, just wanted to quickly introduce our management team. So first, Caroline Sturgis is our Deputy Director. Pedro Aponte, if you could just wave, he's our Director of Revenue and Long-Term Financial Planning. And then Daniel Ramos, who's relatively new with us, he's our Budget Operations Director. He's in charge of our data and systems. We have a ton of data that comes through our systems, tens of thousands of budget line items, hundreds of performance measures, and thousands of city positions. And our office is responsible for keeping all of that stuff together and tracked so that we can put it in a format that you can review. So we're grateful for his leadership too so far in his short time with us. Our, like I said, our role is pretty simple. We oversee, develop and oversee the city's $2.8 billion operating budget. We also develop what we call the city's 10-year financial plan, which is a longer-term look of what the city's finances look like. We also provide analysis and research on a variety of fiscal, operational, and management issues. We do that for the mayor. And we also, of course, report on the fiscal impact of any city council legislation that is proposed. Our role is pretty constant throughout the year. You know, our planning process takes almost a full year. In the summer, we're developing a baseline forecast. In the fall, we're engaging with agencies for their budget proposals. In the winter is decision-making time. And then in the spring, of course, is the public phase of the process where we present the budget to the public and to the city council. I want to just highlight a couple of our performance measures. One, you'll see the second one, revenue forecast accuracy. When we build the budget, we have to make a determination of what the revenue streams will be for the city in the next fiscal year. Our target for that is 2%. 2% of a $1.8 billion general fund operating budget is about $36 million. So even if we're within a very small margin of error, we can be well below or well above budget in a pure dollar term. So I just wanted to call attention to that. We've been pretty good. We've been right around the 2% margin for a few years. It's always better to come in 2% above than it is 2% below, which is why we're conservative in our projections admittedly. But that's one of our key benchmarks. Another thing that's in the book, not mentioned here, is we've been trying to do a much better job of engaging with citizens and getting them involved in the budget planning process. Part of that is just purely educational. There's a lot of citizens that we'll do workshops with that, you know, just don't know much about where the city's money comes from or how it's spent. We've done events with some council members, including, actually, one here, Councilman Henry in his district, informational and getting their engagement in the process. And so we look to continue to do that next year. Our goal is to engage 3,000 citizens in the process, either through the taxpayer night, doing community-based workshops with citizens, or anything else that council members would ask us to do. So I would just open that opportunity. If any folks here, members, would like us to come to a community meeting in their district, we'd be happy to do that, to just share a little bit about the budget and also ask for citizens' input on their priorities. Our goals for this year are simple, to have a good, smooth budget process that keeps us on a fiscally sustainable path. And we are in the process of refreshing our long-term 10-year financial plan. We were five years through the original 10-year financial plan, and we'd like to look at that again on a rolling 10-year basis for fiscal 2019 through fiscal 2028. So that's the basics for us. I'd be happy to take any questions from council members.
Thank you, Bob. Councilman President?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm looking at the salaries and wages for permanent, full-time funded positions. And I see a lot of large salaries. But when you come down to where some of the people actually are doing most of the work, I'm not saying that you guys are not doing the work, nobody should be making $29,834. Nobody. Or $39,197, when I'm looking at $118,91, $103,84, $77,69, $87. So it tells me that those folk who are making the least amount of money are the ones who actually live in the city of Baltimore. Because that's been, throughout each agency, that I've noticed that. And we have to do, we have to do better than that. Our workers who actually live in this city should be paid a decent salary. Y'all finance. Nobody in that office should be making under $50,000.
Which page are you looking at?
125.
Oh, 125.
I'm trying to go through and look and see what else y'all got.
So that, just, page 125 is the Office of Risk Management?
It still falls under finance.
It falls under finance. Not in my purview, but it is in Department of Finance.
Yeah, but those salaries are way too low. We have risk management coming back. That would be...
I'm not sure. Yeah, that was on Tuesday?
Yeah, I don't think so.
Okay, well, we'll send something to them. But on page 90. No, I said page 90. Yeah, page 90. Well, I was looking at that, I lost my page. Actually, it would be probably 126, 128.
Which one are you looking for?
This one here.
You need this.
You got it. All right. All my stuff is all mixed up over here. Okay.
Who would you do without me?
I don't know what I would do without you.
I would need to, I hope that's recorded.
Okay, in the operating budget, 708.
Right.
Okay. The performance metrics show that no money has been saved from management research projects in FY '16 or '17. There is a target of 2 point, I would say $2 million in FY '18 and FY '19. Why were there no savings in fiscal years '16 and '17?
Sure. So our, we have one staff person who's dedicated to doing what we would call larger-scale operational research management, what we call management research projects. In the prior years, we had done reports that actually led to recommendations that saved the city money. We've also done some research projects that look at ways to make agencies more efficient, to actually free up more resources to do more of what they do. And in '16 and '17 in particular, we did a report on inspections throughout the city and another one on senior services, services that are shared by a lot of agencies, mostly health and wrecking parks, to try to encourage them to see if they could find shared efficiencies. So there was no dollars saved from those particular reports. But our general target is that our work in that area should be leading to recommendations that we can take to the mayor, ultimately to the council in the budget process that will save money.
Okay.
Can I dovetail on it? So, but did we experience actual financial savings in previous years? I know you have the book.
So, yeah, so that's a, that's a, that's a great question. We, it's, one of the recommendations, the way we've judged it is if it makes it into the budget, we count it as a savings. Now, whether we ultimately get the savings later, we have to go back and measure. But our, our measure for ourselves is if we have a recommendation that's strong enough that it passes muster with, you know, the mayor administration and passes the council and it made it into the budget, then we count that as a savings. We still have to go back and track and monitor and make sure that we ultimately get those savings down the road. So there are, you know, there are some things that we'll, that we'll recommend, that we'll bring to the mayor that never make it into the budget, that she'll say, "No, we don't want to do that." We don't count those, just ones that make it into the budget.
And with those types of recommendations, and I'm just assuming that, well, I'm already about to answer my own question, but those recommendations are made strictly to the mayor and there is no other vetting process of those recommendations?
So they're first made to the mayor. And I'd be happy to send a link to you or share with you all the reports we've done. Some of them go back many years.
I think that would be beneficial to the council to, because I think sometimes we make an assumption, and we don't want to make an improper assumption of your agency, that you possibly aren't making certain recommendations as it relates to the budget.
Sure.
But if we aren't privy to the fact that you, that you are developing reports
Right.
that make certain recommendations, then either, we're forced to either come up with those recommendations on our own without having the same, maybe, technical guidance that your office provides.
Sure.
But then we might support some of those recommendations.
Sure. Yeah, I'd be happy to share a list of the ones and actually the reports. I mean, some of them are 80 to 100 pages long, a lot of great detail, but I'd be happy to share those. We do have, you know, we, we have, we share with, with the mayor, with the administration, what we would call our research agenda for the year. So we don't just go off and just look at anything. We try to make sure that there are things that they're interested in looking at, efficiencies. So we don't write reports that just sit on, sit on a shelf somewhere. So there is a little bit of give and take. We look for things that we can, that we think will lead to savings that are able to be implemented. And we bring that to them in the summer.
Okay.
And some of that comes out of the budget process. We might learn things from agencies or from the council. We say, "Yeah, we should take a second look at that."
Okay. So I know that this committee, as well as the council, would be interested in those documents. And so I know, Council, Council President?
Sure.
Council President has another question.
Yeah. Still on page 126, where it talks about the number of residents engaged, the number of residents engaged in annual budgeting and planning process.
Sure.
You're showing 308, and then in FY '18, you're projecting 2,835, and then in fiscal '19, 3,000.
Yep.
Can you explain how this is calculated?
Sure. So we've, we're trying to use more online engagement. So what we had done for years was we had done these very small workshops in, at, at community meetings in different neighborhoods. And we still think that is one part of the engagement. Like I said, we did one recently in Councilman Henry's district. Happy to do that for other, other council folks. But those, we found, we just only touched, the few people, there tends to be a very active group that comes to those meetings. It might only be 20 or 30 people. So we've been looking at ways that we can expand and use online tools. And not sure exactly what that will be look like, but we're testing an online simulation where you can let folks online, go immediately on an app or on the web, and give feedback directly about different choices in the budget. Would you prefer more or less of this service? Would you prefer higher taxes or lower taxes? And trying to put those together and getting real-time results. So if we do that, we'll be able to touch more people. It's a little bit less personal, but it's just another avenue by which we can get citizens engaged in the process. So...
My turn, I'll come back.
You can ask as many as you want.
All right. I don't want you to sit and do the same thing.
Don't worry, I'm the chair.
Staying on page 708, many of the, of the performance metric used in the budget books are not accompanied by explanation of the metrics. For public accountability and transparency, do you believe explanation of the matrix, of the metrics should be included in the budget books?
Yeah, so what we've, you know, frankly, just for space and time limitations, we've asked agencies to, you know, list the history of their performance measures going back four years. We do put notes under the performance measures. If there's something that we feel like is not clear, or there's something that has changed significantly, so you'll notice that's sprinkled throughout the book, that we'll have one or two bullets about measures that we try to describe in more detail. But, yeah, we've chosen just for time constraints. We can't explain every single one. That's why we asked the agencies to come in here and be accountable and present and explain to the council on those measures. I should say, I should say, if you go back, I was looking at budget books from even five or six years ago. We used to publish no performance information. So we're trying to cram a lot of information, I think for good reason, so that there's some level of accountability that the council can look to as they review the budget.
But y'all are the finance department, y'all should make them do it. So we want you to have, we want you to include those explanations in the future budget books because it's important for this council to actually know what's going on with that. What's the next one? The fiscal 2019 recommended budget includes funding a new analyst position.
Yes, that's right.
That will focus on revenue generation and cost saving. Can you provide examples of potential revenue or cost-saving initiatives that this individual might research?
Yeah, sure.
You have to excuse me because my bronchitis is acting up and it's messing with my speech. Okay.
Sure. So, so we're, like I mentioned before, we're planning to do what we would call a refresh of the 10-year financial plan. We do a, we do a rolling 10-year forecast each fall. So this fall, we'll do a forecast of fiscal 2019 as the baseline through fiscal 2028. That gives us a picture of what the long-term financial picture looks like for the cities and allows us to prepare in advance. What we need, or what we want the analysts to do, is start developing options for us. On the revenue side, it could be a variety of things. It could be going after revenues that are out there now that we're just not doing a good enough job of capturing. It could be new fees or taxes. You heard the, the fire chief here a moment ago talk about EMS fees. That was one that we worked together with them to raise the fees, just to keep it up with the rate of inflation. It could be taking a smarter look at our tax credits, too. We might have tax credits where we're giving out money that is not really doing the purpose that it was intended to do. On the, on the, on the expenditure side, it could be operational-specific efficiencies. It could be looking at healthcare and pensions. I mean, we always need to take a strong, close look at those. And so we plan to have that analyst very heavily involved in that, that work.
Okay. Well, we'd be interested in what cost-saving initiatives that they have and any revenue generated from that position.
Okay, yep.
Because, like I said before, I think we need to have a certified accountant that has some analyst experience so that when the audits are done, everything is correct.
Right, okay.
Should be somebody, that's one position y'all should be looking at.
Okay.
We don't mind y'all doing that one.
Councilman Henry?
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. Good, good afternoon.
Hi.
So I really just have one question, which is, and it kind of follows up on one of the things, the issues the President raised about the metrics that are shown for each, for each service. How would you feel about working with the President's office and this committee to determine which metrics you're going to put in the next year's budget book for each agency?
So I would, I would love to get feedback. We, keep in mind, too, that City Stat is now, we're, let me give you a little history of how this evolved. Years ago, even when City Stat was here, going back all the way to the O'Malley days, they measured a lot of things. We didn't publish any in the book. And a lot of their measures were very, like, week to week, you know, how many potholes did you fix in a week? And those were important. When, when we started doing, when we started revising our budget process, we wanted to look at longer-term, things like outcomes, what are we ultimately trying to get to? So we developed a lot of those measures. We worked as best we could with the agency. You know, over time, City Stat had kind of fallen off for a while. Now they've got, I think, very strong leadership. They're back, they're going through with all the agencies and reviewing each of their performance measures. So I plan, I mean, we plan to take the feedback that we've gotten through these hearings and, you know, turn that over to City Stat and let them know what the, you know, what the feedback is on the measures. If there's a way to incorporate that, we would love to hear that.
I, I think that sounds great. What I guess I'm suggesting is maybe close that loop a little bit. So you're going to take the feedback that you're getting from these hearings, you're going to go off and talk with City Stat and the agencies about it. What I'm suggesting is, rather than, than just, "We see how it turns out next year," why don't you come back to us, like, later in the fall, very early in the winter, you know, but when there's clearly still time to make changes, come back and say, "This is what we've come up with tentatively for the FY, oh my god, 20 budget books. This is what we've come up with." And give us a chance to, you know, respond to that and give you some more feedback.
Okay. I'll, I'll talk to City Stat about that. I mean, there's hundreds of measures, so there would have to be a way, you know, there could be an instance when, where if a person has a policy interest in a particular agency or just a few services, I mean, to have every council person involved in every measure, I think, would be unwieldy.
That's, that's, yeah, that's why, A, that's why we have committees.
Right.
Okay? And, and B, you, you're basically, I mean, you're, you're doing all of this work no matter what. What I was just suggesting is that it sounds like it would be physically possible to show us what you're going to do well before these actually get printed.
Yes.
And that would be at a point where we could say, "Well, this is nice, but, you know, nobody is asking any questions about this metric."
Right.
And that's the metric that the agency seems to want to show, possibly because it's a metric that is, makes the agency look like it's doing well.
Yeah.
Here's the metric that really bugs people.
Right.
Why don't you put that in the book and see if that helps motivate them to do a better job with that metric?
Okay. I can tell, I can tell you for sure that that feedback does come from us and City Stat. Sometimes an agency will put, will say, "Look, that's not really what somebody wants to see." But if, Marguerite, if you could put that as a follow-up for us, we could talk to City Stat about ways...
If I can dovetail off on Councilman Henry, and I'm glad that you, you brought that up. I mean, this is only my second, you know, budget cycle. But one, and I'm not trying to say that I know all of the metrics that should be measured, but in many instances, the, the metrics that are being presented to us suggest, I'm just like, why, why are you even judging yourself based, this doesn't even, if you achieve it, it doesn't even make your agency that more efficient. And then I, I know that we have a council that, you know, enjoys asking questions, but part of the reason we're asking questions are because the metrics don't match up with, you know, what we're hearing from constituents that is, that's important. So we probably would have, not saying we would have fewer questions, but our questions would be more guided by the budget book if, if those metrics line up with what we're hearing and what we feel like is really important to the constituents. So I didn't mean to interject, but...
Well, the only other thing I was going to say is, I wanted to just agree that the budget presentation that you and your team did for my district-wide community meeting was outstanding. I definitely encourage all of my colleagues to take advantage of that. Having now seen how it works, when you get to the point where you feel like you can go live with the online part, I think that that presentation would actually lend itself very well to a Facebook Live kind of thing.
Sure.
So that even people who couldn't come in person to participate, if they're home, they could still play along with the budget game.
And that's the idea. That's why we have more, we think we can engage more next year. Thank you.
So either Bob or Councilman Henry, can you restate what the follow-up is so that Marguerite can make certain she gets that down?
The, the way I'm seeing it is if, if the, if BBMR could loop back with the Budget Appropriations Committee sometime mid-budget cycle, so I guess that would be in the December-January timeframe, to show us the draft metrics that you're looking at for the different agencies and get an additional round of specific feedback for where you're going.
And so if I can add to that, I think Bob was highlighting a step prior to that where you would engage City Stat to...
Yeah, I would, City Stat's leading the process. We publish the ones that are pulled out in the book.
They're, they're going to do that no matter what.
Okay. Got you. Yeah.
That's good. Thank you.
And I, I'm sorry, say that again.
Yes.
And so I just had one last question. And, and maybe it's not, not for you, Bob, but you can tell me.
Sure.
Would BBMR be responsible for, I guess, doing an analysis or monitoring the grants that we receive as the city and where, you know, where we are as it relates to, you know, fully utilizing the grants, the accounting of the grants? If we're coming to the end of a grant cycle, you know, for activity that the city is dependent upon, so we, we can project that now this is going to become a part of a general fund expense as opposed to, I think that's critical because, you know, some of these services that are, as I said, critical to the city are being funded by grants. And the hope is that when that grant ends, you know, that, that activity isn't going to end. So we need to be preparing for how we're going to fund these activities after, you know, the state of federal grants.
Sure. So going back to the management research reports that we were talking about, one of the ones that was written years ago was an analysis of the city's overall grant position, which first highlighted it as an issue. Actually, it was Caroline who did most of the work on that when she was an analyst. So, so we had done some of the research. The, what was created, BBMR has a role in the grant process. I would call it somewhat limited. During the budget planning process, we reach out to agencies and they put appropriation in the budget if they expect to get a grant. Now, for some agencies, that's pretty simple because they get the same, you know, like CDBG, they get it every year, it's in the right spot in the budget. Other agencies, I would say maybe health is an example, things kind of come and go. So it takes a lot of work for them to get the right amounts in the budget and they come in and out. Our role in that is helping to put that into the budget. Once the grant is applied for and once the grant is accepted in the monitoring of the grant and the tracking, there's a, the unit within the Director's Office in Finance that's, that's responsible for coordinating those. And then there's work, of course, that goes on in the agency. The agency has fiscal staff that's supposed to be monitoring the grant. So the, the unit in the Finance Department is supposed to be setting the policies and overseeing the process, but there's a lot of work that's going on in the agencies, of course, to follow those processes and make sure that they report it. It's still, frankly, a big concern. I think it's, you've seen it come out a couple times at, like, Board of Estimates meetings, it's still a concern for Finance. Our, we've, you know, stuck our nose in where we need to. We have, we have a role to play of, of doing that, but the, the function is largely with that unit and with the agency fiscal staff.
Okay. I'd love to see that recommendation. I mean...
Sure. We'll show you the report that we did when we sent the list from years ago.
And, oh, Councilman Stokes?
I just, moreover, are we working with departments to maximize budget and service efficiencies?
I'm sorry, for budget what?
Are you working with department heads to maximize budget and service efficiencies?
We do, we, there are a lot of, I would say, issues that come up throughout the year where we work with departments on ways that they can be more efficient. I think the, the fire department example that we just talked of, the EMS fees, I mean, we sat down with them and said, "Look, both sides acknowledged that, that had not been adjusted in years, and we collectively agreed to raise that rate and put it into the budget." We do work together with agencies if we collectively agree that there's something that could be more efficient in the budget. Frankly, sometimes BBMR has to go right to the mayor and say, "We think that Agency A can be more efficient, and here's what we think they can do and put it into the budget and impose that." Our, our, our preference is to work with the agency on it, but there's some agencies that are easier, of course, to work on than others. But we do that all the time. Our analysts are assigned, each of our analysts, we have six expenditure analysts, they're each assigned to a portfolio of agencies. And a lot of their work is not just the day-to-day, but trying to figure out ways that they can make their agencies more, more efficient.
But are you able to talk to departments about what is actually, what actually costs them to provide the service?
Yes.
Is that the same thing you just said?
Yeah, yes, absolutely. We, and I, sorry, go ahead.
My last one, are you tracking overtime for large operating departments, police department, fire department, DOT? It's a real budget buster and a real effect, 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 real cost of doing business because they, those four agencies really, overtime probably has been a problem and that really puts a lot of weight on the budget.
Yeah, it's, it's a huge problem. I mean, we all know it. We track, we, we see, we watch police and fire especially very closely. We get a report from the, from police department. I think it's weekly we get, or, yeah, bi-weekly, showing us the trends. What we'll hear from police, I think, tomorrow is that one of the challenges with overtime is the schedule, the patrol schedule we have is, is limiting in a, in a degree. In that they have to require, they have to call officers back on, on overtime to work normal shifts. There's also a cultural issue for sure in the department where there's abuse. You know, we saw that play out over the last couple of months. And I think they have ways they can use technology to get more efficient in overtime. So we look at the reports every week. We make a lot of suggestions. Ultimately, the department has to take that accountability, though, and.
Mr. Chair, is there any way we can get a request on their overtime, how they?
Yeah, if you don't mind, if you can restate that request so that Marguerite could, could.
Are we tracking overtime for our large operating departments like police, fire department, DPW, DOT? Huh?
You got it?
The request, he said, the request, he, I'm asking a request because that's the thing that's killing the budget, all that overtime.
We could show a.
Submit the response on how y'all tracking that overtime?
We could show an example of like a police that's broken down by, by, you know, patrol district and by unit of what we see and what we track.
So you can get it from the other departments also?
Sure.
Can we have a request?
Yes, we can do that. For, for the last three years?
For the last three fiscal years.
Last three fiscal years.
Okay.
But I just, it was, I just had one other question. There's, there's been a lot of discussion, even through this budget, these budget hearings about equity. And, and, you know, many people will, depending on who you ask, it'll be defined differently. And, and much of the discussion has been independently, looking at agency to agency and how they deal or address equity within their individual agencies. I guess my question to you, would it be best, would it be better placed, you know, to look at equity, you know, as it relates to the budget, you know, department? Looking overall at equity and then possibly setting up some parameters for each agency? Not, not taking, not taking away the responsibility from the individual agencies, but almost as a backstop to evaluate, to, to evaluate if the, the individual agencies are achieving those goals. And then are there any other municipalities where the, the budget departments are or agencies are, are taking an active role in making certain that their budgets, you know, you know, reflect that equity and played out through their agencies?
So to answer your question and what Councilman Scott has asked, we don't have, you know, one particular person devoted to it. We do, we have an interest in it. We have an intern coming in this summer. We plan to have them look at how we can incorporate that in the budget process. We had one of our analysts also, we did a peer exchange with Seattle. They have what they call the racial equity toolkit of ways that, you know, questions that should be asked on every policy or budget decision or things that the city does. And really, a lot of it is just training people to think of it in that, in that way, because today, in some cases, it's not being thought of. I think that could play, I think that could play into, I'm not sure exactly how, but I think it could play into the budget process.
Right.
You could look at, again, I'm just talking off the cuff here, you could look at existing programs and say, is this an equitable program? Are there existing programs that are widening inequality? Or are there other ones that are limiting inequality? So there's ways that we could look at it. I'm not sure what that will exactly look like in our budget process, but I, I want our intern to do the research.
Okay.
And then, and then make recommendations. The capital, I know you've heard probably a little bit about the capital. Capital from a budget standpoint is easier in some ways because there's projects, right? That you can map out and say, this project went in this particular district or this neighborhood. Operating budget covers everything. So we'd have to do probably a little bit of a deeper dive to kind of see how service requests are answered or how frequently in different parts of the city. That might be one way to look at it, or it might be when we make budget decisions to, to figure out how we look through that lens.
And, and, and I think you're right. And I think part of the reason I was asking, you know, for it to be housed in the budget is because, you know, you mentioned capital, you know, a capital expense, capital expenses aren't equal depending on what neighborhood you put in it. So I could, I could make, you know, a five million dollar investment in one neighborhood, and it could be deferred maintenance, essentially. And not anything that really propels, you know, community and economic development in that community where it really, really needed a fifteen million dollar investment. And so I, I would hate for us to, to be pushing towards equity and then not really understand, you know, what an equitable investment really looks like.
Right.
Mr. Vice Chair, really quick, who was the, no, just which staff person went?
Okay.
It was, I don't know if you know Mira?
Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you, Bob. Councilwoman Middleton?
I just wanted, you just made me think of something, just a, I just want to ask. Well, you know, my pitch here with apprenticeship and job creation, and I think some of the fear with the agencies, the way the structure is set up for apprenticeship, it's, and the classroom hours, and then you also, it's a paid experience. So I guess the, the, part of the fear is probably trying to figure out how do they incorporate the stages of pay for this apprentice? Just getting into that whole scenario of, you know, the requirements for apprenticeship. If that is something that could be developed, that they could see, I think that the agency would probably click in real quick. It just, you know, it's, and maybe looking at, since Water and Wastewater has a bona fide program that has been going on forever, trying to maybe capture what they follow in their structure of the actual apprenticeship program and sharing that with some of these other agencies, because they seem to have something, some of them seem to have something targeted and in the making, but they don't have any idea of how to put that format together to make it a bona fide apprenticeship.
Right.
I don't know if you can research to set a page or something like that up to show, show the, the committee?
Yeah, I think once we, once we go back and study it this, this summer about how it could be incorporated in the budget process, I mean, that could, that would certainly be one component of it. I mean, it really depends, I guess, how you define, is it, is it employee-specific? Is it, you know, city-specific? Like, there's, there's many ways you can look at it.
And I know Mike Alexander has been around a long time because he's the main apprenticeship connect. He might want to have a conversation with him.
Okay. Yeah, can, what's the name again? It's Michael.
His name is Michael Alexander, and I think he's with, you know, the mayor's office of employment development.
Okay.
Council president with the last question.
Thank you. The performance metrics show that no money has been saved for management research project in FY sixteen or seventeen. And you have a target for two million in FY eighteen and nineteen. Why were there no savings in fiscal sixteen and seventeen?
Those were the two reports, and we'll, we'll send you these. There was one on inspections, overall city inspections, inspectors, and senior services, any, any efficiencies that could be gained between rec and parks and health. Those didn't have budgetary savings, but they were recommendations that made those operations more efficient, where they were able to do more within their existing resources. So we could, we couldn't say that we actually saved dollars from those, but both of those recommendations, we think, created efficiencies within those departments.
But wouldn't you be looking for savings, Dan?
We're always looking for savings. Some of our reports, it just depends on the report that we're doing. Like I was mentioning before, we, we send our agenda, we walk the, the mayor and her team through the agenda to make sure it's something that they're interested in so that we just don't do a report and then have it sit on a shelf somewhere. So in those particular years, they happened to, they wanted to look at those particular services. In other years, we've looked at things that do have a financial impact. Right now, one that's in the, that will likely end up being a report is waste disposal and our future of the landfill, because we're entering a.
That'll be in FY eighteen?
Uh, that will be in FY nineteen.
Yeah.
Because we're ending the, we're coming to the end of the useful life of the landfill. It might need to be expanded. There might be things we can do to make it more efficient. So we're working with Public Works on that one. So that might be one that has, does have actual significant savings recommendations.
Okay. Now, you, you said that y'all show this to the mayor before you do anything. So all I'm asking is, if you show it to the mayor, please come and show it to me and my council.
Sure, we can do that.
So we can be a part of that.
We're happy to do that.
So we can know what's going on.
Sure.
Being, no further questions. Thank you, Bob, and your team for, you know, continuing to, um, lead us through this budget process and your leadership in doing so. This committee will be recessed until six-thirty, when we'll have the Baltimore City Public School system. Thank you.
Thank you.